Everyone's ready, well, I pledge.
I pledge to lead the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. We'll call me to order and look for approval of the agenda. I do believe we need to add, because it's not on the agenda. Prove the scoring of the master matrix.
We approved it two weeks ago for Kent to talk at nine AM. That's the time that was published in the newspaper. Notifications sent to.
They've been sent out.
They've been sent to property owners and dropped off at all the post homes.
And that's called the Rose site, right?
Correct.
So that, that nine AM.
It's called what site, Rose?
Rose, R O S C.
Okay.
I'll make that motion with that amendment.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, there are first and second. Any more discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
And if closed, motion carries. Prove the minutes from August the eleventh.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
There are first and second. All in common is my name is Missfeld.
I, I, it's changed.
Oh, you did change it.
I did, I, I. I emailed him. I emailed and let him know that it wasn't right.
Alright.
Forgot to look though and see if this.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. General public concerns.
Just to let everyone know that we do not pay in the house tomorrow. I'm going to use another one in September. So if you're not even coming this week, or this week, we're gonna have two more. Maybe I just said, if you have questions, or, you know, everyone's back to school, no one's on vacation anymore. I'm gonna say as many concerned or formation to go to.
Okay, and then it's down to Senior Citizen Center if I remember right. Four to seven.
Four to seven.
You know, we can't be what we is.
Well, it's saying people just want to share.
Four to seven.
Yeah, and if people just want to share their opinions, or they, they just want to share. So I made everybody, everybody in a burning.
Do I have a question for you?
The beverage lined up?
That's it.
So through the.
For the meeting, the refreshments.
Good one, Rick.
I accidentally called them. I said, any beverages here?
Are any of the wind farms that are currently around us, are you guys involved in any of them? So if we could talk to anybody, could.
We're not, but I do have a friend that managed one of the wind sites in Pocahontas. I can reach out to him. That would be helpful. He manages one in Palo Alto County right now. He moved from the Pocahontas site up there, but he's from Pocahontas. So again, if that would be helpful.
Well, I'm just, somebody asked me if you guys have any of the ones around here, and I said, I don't have a clue. I guess I've never asked them that, so I thought I'd ask.
That is a good question.
Yeah, it's a good question. We don't. Solar farm in the eastern part of the state. We don't have any wind farms around this area. But if you'd like, I'm happy to rethought to play it too. That would be helpful. You won't be able to be there on Tuesday.
Yeah.
But I need you to answer any kinds of questions about operations, maintenance, what it's like when it's up, construction, emergency responses. He can answer all of that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right, any other general public concerns?
Thank you.
There are none, we'll move along. Ben. We are working our right away.
Morning.
Morning.
So it's a application to work in the counties right away. It's listed as for Regilio Navaras, but it's the installation of Mid-American Fiber Optic Line. He's just the facilitator for communication data link. This is similar to the Mid-American project that you guys saw that moved through Pocahontas County, through most of Humboldt County, and is up in Cassuth right now. All of this work is taking place on state highway or inside city limits. But because it's happening in Humboldt County, they also want Humboldt County to sign off on it. So it's not taking place in any of our actual.
They're doing a lot of this overnight on Highway three. All boring. I seen they done it up on Highway eight. I haven't been up north to it. What, what is going on with all this?
So I guess with all of cyber attacks and everything else, their plan is all of their substations, they're trying to connect with their own fiber optic line to make it more.
Secure.
More secure.
Makes sense. I've seen it going on different parts.
Yeah. But with, with the one that did go through county right away, I guess it went, come in in southwest part of the county and ran up Arizona or P nineteen through Bradgate, east to Hawaii, and then went up Hawaii to one hundred and tenth street. And then east on that to Kentucky, and then north across on one hundred and second, and then jogged across on C twelve. So if you're a landowner in that area, take a look at the farm that runs along that route. Make sure that you don't have damage to a tile line that wasn't located or a driveway culvert. We've been getting phone calls trickling in here over the last week where farmers have been out and seen that the edge of their culvert is damaged from the dozer tracking over it.
And they, they cloud a lot of that in. Big stools of yellow.
And if. Half of those two dozers hooked together to get it to enough traction to pull it in.
Especially once we got water. With all the rain.
So everything else within order?
Yes.
Alright, I'll make the motion to accept this.
I'm second.
There are first and second. Any more discussion? There are none, all in favor? Anyone opposed? There are none, motion carries. Okay, now. We have the master makers for for the hard facility up on Rose and.
Do we have to wait till nine o'clock though if it was advertised?
Should probably wait till nine. I did receive, I did receive one call.
And I got one written complaint.
Okay. So we should probably wait.
Okay. Wait till nine.
That's what I had on my phone too that we had at night.
You got anything twenty-one minutes you can talk about? Dilabuster or anything?
Well, do we have to wait till nine o'clock for Collins? Is that?
We should, I don't think so. That's why I came a little early because I thought maybe you get through your other stuff. It's not a hearing or anything.
No, it's not a hearing. It's just.
Okay.
Okay, if you'd like to come up, call.
A million copies of this. It's a lot of contract language and stuff like that, but I do have a few, few copies.
Do you want to go into drainage?
Yes, we should.
I'll make that motion to go into drainage.
Seconded.
For a second, one favor. Motion carries, we're in drainage. We're gonna discuss sub one of the eleven.
Yeah, so this is just the, the tile project that got approved two weeks ago to move forward with the one inch drainage coefficient. And so we've got bid options for reinforced concrete pipe and dual wall HDPE. Another thing maybe of interest in this is the, the farm to the north, it's Archer. Archer Humboldt, I think is the name of the property owner. That's in alfalfa, they're transitioning to organic. They would like to pattern tile that, yet this fall. And so there was some thought process and okay, how do we set the contract completion date? And what I've got for, for contract completion date is the end of February to try it. Basically, it's got to, we don't want them out in the mud there in the spring. Maybe there's not much of a difference between end of January or end of December and end of February. We'll have to see what the, what the weather's like this winter. But I did put like an alternate item just to say, okay, for that first, I forget, twenty-seven hundred feet or whatever to get for, to do that first quarter, how much extra would you charge to get done with that by November first? And so I don't know what con, a contractor that wants to just get on it right away might say zero because they're gonna start right away anyway.
Yes, if they got time, they're gonna say zero, bro.
Yep, and then if, if a contractor is like, well, I'll do it, but I'm busy this fall and for, for a price, then they could put a number down. I talked with the, the tenant there, and so basically what, how I would see that is depending on what the number is, if it's very small, maybe that's fine just to include as a drains district thing, but if, if really they want that for that property and it's gonna cost X amount more, you know, that could be considered, but maybe it'd be something that they would have to foot that bill themselves.
Part of it because they're requesting it.
Right, right. The, the, the timing on that part of it is, is really for them because they want it. And I didn't want to set the whole project to be done like December first or something like that, because that would, that would also for sure. It would eliminate bidders. To me, it would drive the, the, the price up of the project, and I don't know that it would be fair to ask the whole area to help pay for that. So that's, that's kind of how I have it set up is that the, the contract completion date is end of February twenty twenty-six. And then there's a, there's an item in the bid that they can put like extra cost to complete this first twenty-seven hundred feet by November first. And they don't even have to fill that out if they don't want to. If they don't want to commit to giving, getting it, we'll know that, hey, they're not gonna get started on this right away. So we'll be able to evaluate that when we open bids. Maybe, let's see, I've got after I went through everything, the cost estimate is really very about the same as what I had in the engineer's report, so that's good. There was no surprises. A couple things. The construction plans, I had emailed back and forth with Ben a little bit, and I got your emails yesterday. Don't, you're, you're fine. I and I was hoping, yeah, I was hoping to get this done really quick, and after we got it approved, I didn't get a chance to even work on it the whole rest of that week. And so you, last week, end of last week, I was really trying to get this done so we could get it out for bid, start that process. So I kind of put you in a bad position, sending you an email on end of day Thursday and expecting to get, anyways, doesn't matter. So one thing that before I actually send it out for bidders to look at is at the very south end of the project. That right now, there's the original main tile and there's a relief main that cross, I believe it's one hundred and eightieth street. And there's hick and bottom intakes on both sides of the road on both of those tile. So there's four intakes there. And we're gonna come across the road again with, so with a third tile and put large intakes there. So one of my questions with Ben is, okay, what how, how does, how would he like though the rest of that handled? Because we could end up with theoretically six intakes there on three different tile. And so I was kind of asking what you thought about that.
And I'm fine with just two on, on the new line.
Just the two on the new line, that's it?
Yep.
Okay.
I, we don't need six. We don't, I don't even think we need four. So if you're putting in a brand new line with a one inch range coefficient, it's gonna have more than enough capacity for the road ditch. If you're abandoning any of those lines, we can tear them out, we can throw it out. Whichever. If you're leaving the relief main, like I haven't seen the plan yet, I don't know what's.
I've got them left in there for now.
Yeah, it sounds like both lines are staying in, right?
Yeah, I, so.
Is it Hawaii that they're getting ripped out of them?
Yes. Yeah, in the road right away, yeah. So I, my kind of thinking was the way it, way it's gonna set up is the new, the new tile is the furthest to the east. The old clay tile, which I believe is a ten inch clay that crosses the road, is in the middle of the three, and the relief mains on the west side. So I thought for sure that, that clay tile that could just as well be the, the intakes tore out and maybe that filled up with grout. That's those other, the other two tiles, a culvert right there through the road and we could dig all that stuff up, but whatever you want.
I mean, the culvert's fine, it's probably the end is more as equalizer.
Yeah.
Balance of water out both sides. That's fine, it's staying.
Balance water out both sides. That's fine and spinning.
Okay. Okay, well, yeah, I we can, I'll probably just add in that we'll have them tear out those. The hicken bottoms and then fill that clay tile with grout. When we get to the south side of one eightieth. We're gonna actually cut to the, we're gonna tee to the west and then intercept. Anything that's on the south side of one hundred and eightieth street, we're gonna intercept all that into the new tile anyways. Um, so we could.
So all that intake would would have been serving was the road ditch.
Yeah.
That basically would be the start of the line, is what you're saying.
Yeah. So that's. That's one thing I was gonna change a little bit probably before I send it out. For contractors to to look at.
But you're not gonna take it, take the index off of the. Relief tile that was put in seventy-five years ago, your legal notes and the new.
I was thinking, if that's okay with you, man.
I just don't want six. No, you don't need the middle two because that.
Yeah, that was my thought.
Yeah, that's gonna get broken abandoned or supposedly.
Yeah.
Would it be? I mean, we're already digging the road up. Would it be more efficient just to dig the road up and crush it than bring in a uh, route it, pump it and all that stuff?
And you wouldn't need an additional contract item. Be the contractor doing the work. You'd have a backup there.
That's what I thought. How long is it gonna take to dig it up is to bring in a guy to pump the four ground.
Bring a little rack out to smooth up the road surface.
If if I if one of you would shift the D O for the last. Plan pa- I guess the last page in your whole packet, that would show that one hundred and eightieth street. Is that culvert? Is the culvert there? Is that right?
Spectacles on there.
I don't know for sure. It could. It's real. It's not right over top of that. It's a little bit offset, not very far. So. E- either way.
Then the culvert is fine going through the road?
It's been hit when they cleaned it before it up and it's a good culvert because it's not very old. Ben, were you were you there? That was probably one of your first things they put that in. They put a new one in because the old one was really a mess.
On one eightieth?
Yeah. They cleaned it too. When they cleaned it, they put that in. I don't know how many years ago that was, but I don't remember that one. But oh, that might have been just for Paul left. But that all happened at that time because he cleaned out how many feet? There may be five hundred feet. On both sides.
Yep. Yep.
That's all I'm recommending. I should just dig up, dig it up and crush it rather than being a contractor, pump it for growth.
We can do that. That's fine. I will add that in.
So I have a question on the. The amount of tile that I was just looking at the front on your numbers. In your timeframe. What happens if they don't have that many thirty-sixes and twenties and thirties and? And they have to start building and we can't do this all this fall because that's a lot of.
Yeah, we'd have to.
And I'm sa- I'm guessing that that would come from. Out here. But that doesn't mean that somebody wouldn't under. Bid them. But that's a lot of pipe.
Yeah, it's a fair amount of pipe. Um. I I would say that. Oh, a couple things. One is. The the suppliers, they're gonna they're gonna see this too. I've actually already let them know. That, hey, this is coming and I told them roughly the amount of pipe, just so they have like an extra advance heads up. Start making it maybe here to have something on hand. I don't know how much of different sizes and stuff they keep. On the on the yard. Um, but that. That's potentially could be an issue with the RCP. I mean, that you can't just say, oh, we're gonna. Make that today and use it tomorrow.
So long, so.
Yep. There will be a li- so. Between when we open bids, which I'm suggesting three weeks from today, so September eighth. From that time, once. Assuming we award the contract that day, there'll be some time before they can even put in pipe. So they'll have. Because we gotta get the contracts all fully executed. And also. It's gonna take a little bit of time at that, at the head wall, at the box culvert. They have to, they have to tear out. The front of that that old head wall and form up and put a new one in before they can even start. And that's gonna take some time to build that. And to let that cure before they can put the pipe in and start going. Um, so there'll be some time for to get some of those pipes built if they need to. But I can't really speak for the the pipe suppliers. I don't know.
We couldn't get it to rain and now we can't turn it off. So the minute you award this thing, it's gonna start pouring.
More pouring.
I sure hope not. I sure hope not.
Guys, before we go any farther here, we got back the truck up here a little bit, uh. We agreed. That that tile should be put in at the one that's there as a county man.
Yes.
Okay. But then also that takes a hundred and twenty inches out of paying for this new one. That ain't gonna happen or there's nobody gonna vote for this. No, because that's a hundred dollars an acre for everything that's left. These people need to pay for that and then we're gonna take it out.
Maybe for what though, David?
They put it in the district and whatever the total bill is, it's gonna be assumed on all the acres. Then we can take that out. Because as it is right now. Me, Mark Scow, the people to the south and my brother, we're getting ripped for over a hundred grand. Because we're taking that out. That's not right.
Well.
It's in the district now.
It is.
Yes, and that's the way it needs to be paid for. And then afterward.
That's not how that works though, David. They're not, they're not using this new tile at all. That includes your lane. We we talked about that when we did the pre-class. That's why those acres weren't shown in the pre-class. We didn't design the tiles to take those acres either.
I know, but that ain't right.
It.
That ain't right.
I would disagree with you. There's no benefit to those acres to from this tile. Doesn't matter if it's currently in DD eleven sub one. It it, which it is in the ditch district.
And that's what it goes by. That's what anytime we've ever dealt with anything, if it's in the ditch district, that's who pays. Nobody gets a special out.
No, it's who's who's benefiting from that, from that new improved tile.
They're benefiting from it because who knows? They're not gonna tile into that. Who knows? They're not gonna go piled into this new tile and go right up next to the one that's there. You, we don't know that. And you're not gonna stand out there every day for the next fifty years and look.
Well, we're making, we're gonna make that other private tile a district tile.
But who says they're not gonna go right up next to it up into the new? This is not right.
That could happen anywhere.
That's exactly right. And yeah, but we're gonna try and protect them a little bit and those people need to pay for that because it's in this district. And you know what? Everybody that I was affiliated with and I don't know where the Archer property is, but everybody else agrees with me. But they couldn't be here today. Everybody else in the district agrees with me. And it's a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and this. This would have been a good discussion to have more of on the day of the hearing when the whole thing was approved.
That's right. But you know what? We agreed to putting that in there, but we never thought about the consequences.
Okay, I thought that was made clear.
No, that was not made clear. That 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 we were gonna pay their bill.
I wouldn't view it that way, but the pre-class didn't show those acres as paying any. And that's when we had the meeting two weeks ago. That. I mean, that's, that's what. The pre-class was. So presumably, everybody understood that those acres were not gonna be expected. To pay for this new tile that they weren't gonna use. We're gonna make that private tile.
We don't know if they're not gonna use. I know where the lines, I didn't even hear the lines all that, but who says they're not gonna tile right up next to that old tile that's there and come to the new one? Because I guarantee you the new one's gonna bring a lot better than the old.
Yeah, what what I did for the acres is. Basically, where that part, where that currently that private tile is, anything on the south and west side of that.
Yeah.
Is all paying for this new tile. So. In my mind, it'd be pretty unlikely if there's an existing sixteen inch tile out there. For them to go from the east side of that tile and then cut across it to get to the new tile. Does that make sense? The one that we're proposing to put in as part of this project?
Well, it does.
So we've got everything. From that tile to the to the west is is paying for this project. That's how the pre-class was set up.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but that doesn't mean it's gonna be that way.
I mean, they're gonna pattern tile it this fall and so we can. We can make sure that they don't do that. We've told them that they they cannot. You know, cross this line. And so I don't know what more than that we can do.
Well, I understand that, but when we back the truck up here, they need to be in the district to pay for part of this. Because I mean, uh, I guarantee you, you wouldn't like it if you think you're paying a lot more money because somebody's lynch it out. None of you sitting on that board would agree to that. Not a one either. If it was your property, you're not gonna agree to it.
But they, I mean, those acres haven't used that, the the to tie this DD eleven sub one main tile. It's been in that private tile for since nineteen sixty-six.
Yeah.
And so they haven't.
In the district for a hundred and how many years? Hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty?
But in the ditch district is fine, but they haven't. They haven't used this tile. Why would they pay for it now? I that doesn't, that doesn't.
Because a hundred and twenty years ago, they put it in the district and they went in and put their own private tile in. That's why.
What I what I would tell you though, David, if somebody puts a private tile in and goes. It does something like this, when I came back and reclassified it or designed an improvement like we did here. I would consider that in the reclassification and I did that in the pre-class because they're not using it anymore. They've basically take, they've had the ability to and they did take care of privately tiling that themselves.
Yep.
So I I don't know. So what are you suggesting? You're suggesting that?
Suggested that it's in the district and they pay just if just say, for instance, we're paying about what? I think about eight hundred dollars an acre is what we're paying right now. That's a, that's a number I'm showing at you. It's not exact. That whole hundred and twenty acres needs to pay that eight hundred also.
And we talked about this a couple meetings ago about them paying something, maybe now full price, they need to pay something. And we talked about this a month or so, where I know that.
They will be paying because they're as part of this. We're gonna do a reclassification and set that up as its own county tile. And they'll pay for that reclassification.
But then after this tiled in and after this is all settled, then reclassify it and then do that. But right now.
That's David, that's. I don't believe that's even legal as far as the drainage code goes. It, when you do an improvement like this, you it says you have to do a reclassification. And that's to be used to pay for the project. And so that reclassification has to be based on benefit. And if those lands have zero benefit from this tile. Which you maybe could make an argument that there's a benefit, but I don't. To me, saying that. It was in the district before is does not mean that it has a benefit from this improvement project. That's that's not gonna be sufficient to say that they should pay. So I I can't commit to. In the reclassification, charging those acres eight hundred dolla- eight hundred dollars an acre. To me, it's not even legal.
Well, it's in the district and that started that hundred and twenty years ago. That that district is.
How it's always worked, David, is when you decide who pays what, it's it's relative benefit. And if you cannot say that there's a benefit, then. You cannot say that they pay. And so if they have their own, they're they're take, there there's a separate system, they're not tied in at all. How can you say that they have a benefit from improving this, putting in this new tile that we're talking about putting in? Unless they're gonna unless they're gonna tie into it, which. They've said that they're not going to. And to me, it makes sense that they wouldn't. And they'd have to go really out of their way to try to do that. And it was a. The private tile that's in there now that we wanna make a district tile. Ha- has an upgrade on it that it's it's a half inch drainage coefficient. It's not a one inch like what we're talking about putting in. Um, as part of this project, but. It's way better than stuff that was put in a hundred years ago. That was like a ten.
I'm not denying, I'm not denying it, Colin. I'm not denying it. I'm I'm just saying the pay schedule's not right here. That's what I'm saying.
One question I have, just to make sure I understand. So we're, we are, we already agreed to make that a private tile into the district tile.
Yeah.
You said it doesn't make sense for them to go to this newer tile that's gonna flow faster.
Right.
But it, because private tile, we have no control over where what they do with private tile and where they go, right, correct?
Uh, to, well, they can't. They can't, they shouldn't be crossing drainage district boundaries. So he- here's an example of what David's worried about is that. We do this project, we send the bills out to everybody and then all all of a sudden. When that farm gets tiled, they go to this new tile free of charge.
Yeah, I'm thinking that too.
And that's, that would be illegal. The drainage district could, but I I get that. It was the police.
That's my concern. It isn't that because we we make control what they do. It's illegal. We don't know. I'm not saying they're gonna do that, but I think we have to have some kind of safeguard.
And you do that by making them pay that on the whole district.
Absolutely.
That's very simple, Colin.
I can't commit to doing that. I I'm sorry.
Everybody else is protected though. You know what I mean? We've got to.
Yeah, I I can get, I get that.
Well, the first.
Charging them.
From you, Colin, showed that that was in the district.
Right?
Yes. So why is it illegal if it's, you know? Illegal now, but wasn't back then on the first letters we got.
I think you found out later. It wasn't.
I so.
Originally thought it was and then he found out.
It still is.
It's it's currently in on the assessment schedule for DD eleven sub one.
Okay.
It is.
They're paying for, if we have a clean out that ditch, they're gonna pay for it. So it's in the district.
Right. But what what happened there was. I wasn't clear on that private tile as far as a lot of private tiles are out there that I don't know are in existence. And so they were talking about. Um, pattern tiling that farm and I knew there was a private tile there, but I didn't know how big. If it was adequate, if they were gonna use it. And so. To be safe at the beginning, I included that in the area to make sure that. It was covered. But as time went on, we found out more and more about what was out there. Mark Scow dug up that agreement. We found out what size it was. We got some grades on it. And when they were looking at pattern tiling, they're like, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna use that.
Yeah.
And so.
I I understand that. I understand all that.
That that's how.
Right, the way it is right now. And everybody else in the district agrees with me because I've talked to everybody.
Okay.
Mark Scow can't be here today or he would have been here.
Yeah, I don't know. What you want us to do at this point.
It makes a hundred dollars an acre difference, does.
Yeah, well, to me, if you've got the benefit issue and what the code says. And then the other thing is, in my mind, what the reason why you want to charge them ahead of time is because they could. If if you don't charge them, they could do something illegal and illegally tie over into that. So you're gonna charge them ahead of time. For something that would be illegal if they did it otherwise. And I don't know that that's. That's really a fair way of going about it either.
That's not. I'm just saying they're in the district. They just need to pay whatever they do after that. That's fine. That's their business.
So if you go ahead and charge them and include them in this district and they go ahead and hook into it, that's okay? That's legal then?
Yeah.
Okay, and the availability of the improvement is that that's what that's what I believe they think they want. Partial payment for.
But now the problem is, this thing that's sitting in front of us isn't sized right.
It's not, not for those acres.
No.
If so, and Mike, I wanna I wanna clarify just to just to make sure we're on the same page here. If we if we do this project the way that I've got it set up, they would not have ability. Availability to tie into that tile legally. They would not be in the schedule to pay for it. And they would have their own schedule for their private tile that would become a a district. And they would have their own schedule for their private tile that would become a, a district facility. That was part of what was agreed. We gotta get signatures. It was all contingent on that. But that's already been approved to put, to make that a district tile.
Yes, is that already, I thought we accepted that.
We need to get, we, part of that was getting his signatures from the landowners. And I have, I, I focused on getting this.
So that isn't completed yet?
No.
Okay, that's why I wanted to. I didn't know if that was already.
It's, it's just, it is, but contingent on those signatures.
Okay, can we say, okay, I'm just gonna throw this out there. If, we know they're gonna pattern tile that. Can we say, hey, we wanna know when you're gonna pattern tile it? And then the land, adjacent landowners, if they wanna watch, they can pay it. I mean, I don't know, is that something, Dave, that you would?
I, I don't care what they do. Just put them in the district and let's pay for it like it should be. Everybody's in that district. And what, what they do then after that, I don't care. I don't care.
And that's what I asked you is if, if they, if they've become part of paying for this, is it legal for them to hook up to it if they want? Then it won't really matter.
There's, there's the people that. Starting the petition to do this. They know this is something I told those people to do twenty some years ago. Cause it was bad then. We fixed it every year since then. I told them to do this twenty years ago. But now, I, I, we take that out and it means that much difference to us. I, I just don't think that's quite right. And, and everybody agrees with me that, like I said. So, you know, we gotta figure out where we're gonna go from here, but I hope it doesn't go the way it is set up right now. Because I guarantee if it was your farm, Colin, you wouldn't like paying all this extra when you know that those people are in the district. And pretty soon you're gonna have somebody here south of Humble doing the same exact thing. You're gonna set a precedence while we got our own tile. We don't need to be in this district. That's not right.
I don't know about district, if, if you don't use the, if you don't, and I don't wanna say don't use the tile. But if you don't benefit from it, I would.
Aren't they a different lateral?
Weeks ago, that was the talk. It was gonna be a separate lateral that would be assessed separately.
Yeah.
So if they did it, they replaced that lateral and you wouldn't be charged for it.
Yeah, well, he's got a little bit of land in there.
Yeah, a little bit, but, but over the whole, the whole project went, paid for that small fifteen inch lateral.
I don't have land. My brother does.
Okay.
My brother does, yeah. But. And it, and it, it doesn't drain probably six or seven or eight acres back there, but it.
Right.
It's a little bit. It was absolutely a swamp. And we hooked into their tile and we had a, we never did get it on paper, but we have an agreement with the Archer family. That we could hook into their tile, cause all our water run down right on top of them and it stopped that. It absolutely stopped it when we fixed ours.
Sure.
So that's how that stands. But that doesn't pertain anything to what paying for this district is.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Are we past the point of the remonstrance?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. So that's probably where we pass that point.
Well, we haven't voted on it yet. We haven't signed anything yet, right?
It has been voted on to approve the report. There's, there's no vote with the landowners. It's just, there's, is there written objections and then you count that towards remonstrance? So that, that point is passed. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean the board can't. Change their mind, cause the board's decision is trustees. That doesn't mean that it can't be stopped. For example, if we open bids, this is separate from this issue. But if, if we open bids and they were way higher.
Stop this project. We do not wanna stop it. We just need fair pay.
That's what I'm trying to do.
This project.
And that's where this.
The pre-class.
The pre, the classification. So that's where the reclassification will go. Right here.
Yeah.
And will it cha- this change at all after we do this project?
It's possible that it could, because there'll be two other commissioners involved in that. That was just me.
Okay.
And so there, but typically those aren't, it isn't gonna change much. I don't know what they would say to that other part, but. I just, I question the legalities, cause it's, for me, in looking at it in terms of benefit. I don't, I have a hard time making an argument that they, that those lands on that other lateral. Would benefit at all from this new tile. They, they have independent outlets into this box culvert. That goes under the road into the ditch. And so they're separate, they're completely separate, independent tile systems.
How does, how does the, the LIDAR show how the land lays for the surface water drainage?
Yeah, and one of those reports has a, has an elevation map. Do you have an amend, probably, there's an amendment. Number one there. It's in one of the older.
You know what? I'm just, I, the pack rat, so there we go. I am, I admit that.
So I believe in this one.
Cause I, I know in past, where we have people in drainage districts. And they claim they know, have no benefit because their tile outlets passed our area.
Yeah, so you can see, this is, it's, it's focusing in on that lateral. And so this is a, this is a low area with highs here and there's kind of a, this is a, this is a depressional area. So it has to pull up, like you were talking, surface water has to pull up. And then it would go, come this way and down here. That's another thing, the lay of the land makes me think, boy, it would kinda be odd to try to run all the way over to the new tile.
Yeah.
The, the new tile's gonna be right here.
Yeah.
And so they have to get all the way. I, I don't know. They have, basically they have to abandon that.
So where, where now, like you're saying, this red line is, every from here over is included? Not quite. Or is?
This, so this is a line that's part of their thing. So see, I've got a line just on the, on the southwest side of that, that lateral. And so anything outside of this area over here is, is paying. That's how the pre-class was set up, that they'd be paying for, for this new tile. And it was, that new tile was designed for only those acres, not, not these acres. And if they were gonna, if this was gonna get re-tiled, I mean, it would make sense to me, you'd come to this spot again. And you, the, the most you could do is go straight west and try to tie in here. You're still only using that amount of the tile. So that's the other thing, is even, let's just say, forget that lateral. It's not there. How would we, would those lands be included? I would. How would I assess them? Well, they would be well below the average. And it's on that use factor, because they're only, they would only use, even if, if they did tie into that new tile, they would only use a short distance of them. Whereas, so they didn't really, even if they were gonna use it, they didn't need all the tile, the more tile that's part of the project to the south. And so they wouldn't be on a high.
I agree.
But even if we had them in the, assuming that tile wasn't there. They wouldn't be, they'd be below, well below average as far as the dollars per acre on that.
Well, you're not gonna be, they're not gonna be as much as it is a mile south of that, or my other farms.
Okay, I get, yeah. Cause some of that's over a thousand. These other, just for reference point, the, they had about four hundred dollars an acre. On that Archer farm that's, that's current, that we have within it now on the pre-class. So this, this area here was about four hundred dollars an acre. And if we just threw this all in there, it would probably be that or. Probably less actually, because that tile would only be using this. So this is actually on the higher side. This all would come down here. And so it's further away from the tile and it's using only a small portion of it. What is that? Let's see. I think that says three ninety-eight. They could be three hundred dollars an acre if we just, if we threw those in. But again, I don't, I don't see that we have a good argument that they have a benefit from that tile.
I don't need it. But you know what? They're in the district. That's the argument.
But when we do a project, we have to set up a schedule to pay for it. And so that, what was in, in a certain district is kind of irrelevant to that.
Well, going back to what you said earlier, Rick. If we put them in it, then the new tile that we're talking about putting in is undersized. So it could end up costing more if you have to go back and recalculate this additional acreage coming into there to drain it, right?
Right.
So it could cost you more than that.
It should only, it should only have to upsize the first stretch.
Half mile.
But.
Between that.
Your point, your point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're damned if we do and damned if we don't.
We don't need to alter that tile that's in there that they've got, that they're playing, claiming exemption of it. They just need to pay for being in the district, that hundred and twenty acres. That's all. I, I'd say leave that tile alone, go do anything with it. Pay, let them pay their district, like I said. And then they can hook on, do whatever they wanna do. I don't care. Tile in there and that tile right there and the old relief main, there's gonna be very excellent drainage in that eleven hundred acres. It's gonna be really good. And I'm not denying that and we're willing to pay for it. But everybody needs to pay a little bit and they just don't exempt somebody.
But that won't exempt them, because you're still gonna reclassify them, because they're gonna get put into the district, correct? So they might not.
Still in the district, they're just on a different lateral.
Right, but they'll be paying a different percentage.
They'll pay a little bit, it'd just be the amount for the reclass, basically, to set it up.
Yeah.
So not much, but they'd have to pay a little bit. Not what he's talking. Yeah.
And, and if their assessment is four hundred dollars an acre, a hundred and twenty acres, that's real easy to figure out. That's fifty thousand bucks. That should come off the total bill from us.
Now, I. Need to redo that lateral that.
They won't redo it, Ben. They're not gonna alter. Don't alter. Just pay for your share. They can do whatever they want. I'm not saying.
But what I'm saying is thirty years now and it's shot, or a hundred years, it's whatever. Then are, are you gonna pay to fix that lateral too?
Well, we're probably gonna have to, because we're gonna be hooked onto the end of it.
Yeah, that's it. Right.
But I mean, would the whole, the whole area pay for that one? Cause that's kind of the reverse.
Be in its own district, Rick. They shouldn't have to.
Yeah. I. I can't commit to, to doing what you're asking, David. And if that's a problem for the project, I mean, the, the board, the board is gonna have to decide on that. I mean, today, the, the purpose of today was to bring the plans and specs and possibly set a bid letting date. Um, we can, if there's. I guess I need direction from the board. I, I, or there's more questions or discussion. But I, I can't commit to doing what you're asking, just because they're part of the existing district. That doesn't mean that they pay as though they are using this, this tile. When it's clear, it's clear, there's a existing half inch drainage coefficient tile out there. That's completely independent from this system that we're even talking about. So I don't see the benefit of this project to those acres.
Well, then we're probably gonna independently table it.
Well, we can, we can.
We can go with the bidding. We can.
I mean, we have to make a decision today or table it, think about it a lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If he said, if David said the rest of the group is not for it, then. For it next week, they're all gonna be saying, what the hell did you do?
You do want the project. Right.
But.
You guys just need to figure out how, whether that's fair to pay for that or not.
I, I'm gonna, no offense, Dave, but I'm gonna side with Kyle.
Yeah.
Because I'd always said about drains, you gotta follow the code. And he's doing his job. So I, I'm, I gotta side with him, because. They're, they're not benefiting from this new, new tile, so they can't. Unless, like you say, unless they tile over it, but I can't see why they would.
Well, they are benefiting from a ripper. They wouldn't have been a petitioner. They wouldn't.
Well, they're, they're benefiting on the other acres that's draining, cause they are paying.
Yep, and I, I can, I can address that a little bit, David, because they, they were not aware of this private tile. I made them aware of it, because I found it in old, once the petition was filed and I was hired. I typically, as I do, I look back through the old drainage records to see what's happened. And as part of that relief, um, main tile project in about nineteen fifty or so. There was this dotted line there that said something about a private tile. And then that, at the bulkhead, they said leave a eighteen inch hole here for, for a private tile. And so I thought, well, that's interesting. And I asked. Uh, Mark Fair about it, and then they wanted to go out there. It's in Alpha Alpha. So they went out there and checked it out. And I'm like, yeah, there's a, there's a, they've, they've located it and, and looked notes clean. And basically they're, but once they found that out, they're like, yeah, we're gonna use that. So I don't know if their complete petition process factored that in. Cause they didn't, they didn't know it existed until I told them it existed. So that's kinda how that, that developed. But, cause you're right. I, I, actually, there was a statement made to me that if they would have known about that, maybe they wouldn't have petitioned it.
Well, I don't need to slice them, because every year we fix holes in that tile. There's only got eighteen inches of dirt over it. And it's that old, uh, I call it eggshell clay.
Yeah.
And it ain't, it ain't good tile. It ain't good tile at all. And it needed fixing twenty years ago. Or thirty years ago.
Yeah.
Cause we've been paying every year to have somebody from out there to fix a hole or two.
But you can see as, I mean, as part of this, that, that hundred and sixty acres. A lot of that is and can be drained with that existing private tile that they didn't know was even there. They assumed that all went into this, this clay tile that's gone. So I don't know if that makes any difference.
Thank you. From the big, beginning, they thought they were already hooked into that tile.
Yeah.
The way they were draining, but they're not. I think that one's yours. That tile's nineteen six old.
Yeah, Mark's, when Mark Scow filed that agreement, it was from nineteen sixty-six.
Well, that's six years old.
Eddie Brothers put that in. I was a little kid. I remember with that app.
Okay, so we sit here today, right now, with the specs in our hands. And whether to accept the specs and plans and sort of bid date.
We've gotta follow data's law. Everybody wants the project, correct? You need the project. So we might as well move forward. That's my, that's my personal opinion. And at least get the, the bid going and get a bid date set and move forward.
I will make one more comment. As far as, as far as paying, how to pay for the project, we've got a pre-class out there. It's free. And when we do the reclass, there'll be a hearing and there's. There's ability for landowners in, in, that are involved in it to file objections and say, we don't believe that this is set up fairly. This should be done differently. And that, the answer to that question, it, it can be answered at that time. I, again, I can't commit that I'm gonna put out there something much different than what the pre-class is. But the board ultimately has the final approval authority for that. So that issue, not to kick the can down the road. But nothing's, nothing's set on how a project is paid for until we get to that reclassification hearing.
So what happens then, if we're, everybody else in the whole district objects how this is? And then at that time, we can throw that other hundred and twenty acres in to be into the bid process or the pay process? I guess not bid.
That process is where you decide who pays what for the improvement project. Um, but there's not a remonstrance thing. So everybody in the district could object to that. And the board would have to take that into consideration, but they, they ultimately would be the ones deciding. So it's not like the landowners can. So it's not like the landowners can can decide for the district. Like they can with an improvement where remonstrance could happen with the reclass.
Everybody's together, you know, they probably know brighter about the board, right?
I I can't answer that on behalf of. I mean, that's. That would be their decision.
Yeah, I know that.
So I guess my point is, is if. We know the project has been approved and there's still a desire from the landowners in the district to do it. That the issue that we're talking about today is maybe a separate one, but. I get, it's still up to you if you wanna move forward with putting this out for bid and and address that. When the reclass happens. Or table it and talk about it more.
Dave, you you agree that, and all of you do agree that this needs to be done. Right, right, and I'm not trying to argue that point, but also, we've got to follow drainage law. So if we have to follow drainage law and it doesn't go exactly the way. You want it to go. Then we still gotta do it, right? Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion that we set a a date.
So your motion is to accept the plans and specs instead of date for the bid.
Can I comment one more thing before you guys vote on it? When we do this, now they're going in there and they're gonna collapse this whole tile. Are you guys gonna be there all the time to make sure that the tile that we've got hooked into that old tile gets hooked back up to the new? So we need somebody there all the time cuz uh, we don't want this stuff we got pulled on our drainage ditch here.
So how that's set up in this, Dave, is that. Once we get, uh, actually, we're not gonna be digging up that tile the whole way.
We break it all the way though, right?
Well, in Archer property, basically, we're gonna cut through it several times, but. Then we're gonna let them do their tiling and. And wreck it themselves. So we're not planning on separately digging that, digging that out. In in on the Archer property. Once we get out of that. It starts to, it goes in, it kind of angles, and then it goes into the road ditch. We're tearing it out in the road ditch. When it comes back out of the road ditch, it's got more depth on it. We were planning on leaving it. And then the, so the that original clay tile is gonna be in the middle. There's a relief main on the south side and we're putting this new one on the north. So we were planning on leaving that there. And so anything on this coming from the south, we presume is either tied, probably tied into that relief main. Anything coming from the north, we're gonna catch with this new tile, which is the majority of the. Your guys' property. We're gonna catch anything coming from the north, and then we're gonna leave that clay tile on Huntermark property.
You're not breaking it?
No.
Cuz when we tiled some of that farm there, I know we went across the top of the old tile. And hooked into both tiles because that old tile was just, it was crap. And that was.
From the north going like, from the east going west, kinda? Yeah, that makes sense.
Cuz that old tile was crap, and that was forty years ago we started tiling that.
And we'll catch all those with the new, build the way all hooked into the new.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, but uh, it makes me nervous there about that old one because you just can't leave open holes out there. We're gonna have subholes. Because on another farm that I got, we just went in and re-tiled it. Now I have subholes out there all over. I fixed five this spring. That's not right.
That clay tile on your guys', is there, has there been a lot of problems with that?
We have never had a one.
So that's, that's part of. Leaving it. We can, we could go along and tear it out, but it would be a separate, a separate trench. And so it's gonna be an additional cost to tear that out. We're kind of isolating it cuz we're gonna have tiles on both sides of it. And so if it hasn't, if there hasn't been holes and things, it's maybe best just to leave it. But. That's how we got it set up, Karen. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. What you're doing, yeah, I understand that. I just hope it works. Cuz you're gonna have to dig it all up in in a few spots and and fix the tiles that we've got going into both of them. Cuz they're all gonna have to be plugged if it's all going into the new, cuz you're gonna have to fix. Both the relief main and the old main. They're gonna have to be plugged. You can't leave them, you just can't leave it open. And if we put the new tile in there on the east side of that, then it hooks to that. We're gonna have open tile there. We can't.
We're not plugging the relief main.
No. Plugged though, where they're, where they're hooked into it.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is where we we connect them over, we're doing a few cross-connect points. Where we do that, we're running anything that's coming into that into the new tile, and then the downstream side of that, we're blocking off.
Yeah, we have to have to have that covered. Then I find several of those for you.
Yeah. And that that'll all be fine because we're running, we have specific spots where we're, we're catching everything that's in that chunk. And then running it into the new tile.
Then the question I had was, you guys are gonna be there cuz we don't want this stuff pulled on us like happened on another project we had. Cuz Rick Hopper never showed up, and that was a bad deal.
Yeah, um.
He would show up a half a day a week.
Yeah, we're gonna be there more than that. We're, I I we're not planning, we have not planned on full-time inspection that we're there every. Uh, every waking hour that they're working. That would add a tremendous amount of cost to the project. But especially in, some of it, as you can imagine, depends on who the contractor is. But we always do a lot upfront to make sure they get off to a correct start. And then. And photographs and we show up. We could show up at any time. We don't tell them like, uh, we're gonna be here on Monday and Wednesday and Friday at ten AM or something. Know when we're coming. We show up.
And we put that other tile in there when we close those ag drain wells. This is a completely central project. Those people were there five days a week, all day long, and made sure everything was perfect. We've never had any problem with that, and those people were very meticulous because the guy that was doing it took the pew and filled it up. His next layer through with the trench, and he made them dig them out. That's how meticulous those were, and that's what we need on this project, or we're gonna have a mess everywhere. Better always funded though, wasn't it, David? Seventy-five percent. It was still a local company. It was a company you used to work for at our moment.
Bolt and main.
Then at first.
I did the first. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, I just said first, I haven't gotten the center. Second, but Bob. In the discussion on this topic.
We still have a way to pick this out of. I mean, at the end, before they start digging, there's still a way that.
We open the bids. So did you set the bid date and time?
Accepting the plan.
And then, yeah, then we'll do the bid date, correct?
All at one thing. Set the plans and put the date. Okay. You're talking like three weeks from now?
You're gonna have GPS coordinates of every time you hook into this new tile with our private tile?
That'd be September eighth.
And that, when we do the as-bills, we will have a listing of those. And all the GPS for the private tile connections. You know, we can give landowners a copy of that. And well, and the county will also have a copy of those, so if somebody loses something, they can come in here and get, get those.
Okay. So I have a motion to uh, set the plans and specs for BD eleven sub one. With a set time and date of September eighth at nine o'clock. Is that correct, Sandy?
Well, the twenty fifth, the first.
Yeah, it would be the eighth, but.
The second. And the eighth. Is three weeks.
I didn't write any notes on that, so that's shame on me.
You got other stuff maybe scheduled?
That's what, yeah.
Oh, it doesn't matter. Upfield that day too, I think. I wrote it in that thing.
I didn't, I didn't write that down. Normally, I. Thing on my, I didn't put it on my phone, and I didn't, I don't have anything written.
And that's not a public hearing, is it? No, so I think we'll be fine.
All right, I just wanted to.
Okay.
Nine o'clock?
Going back to the motion was to accept plans and specs for DD eleven sub one tile improvement, set the time and date as September eighth, nine o'clock. That's the motion. And Bruce, are you seconding that? Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Very none. Plans are approved and data set. Okay.
I got one more question for you. Colin, on my sister's farm, we put in thirty-five hundred feet of twenty inch tile instead of going through the camp. Cuz we knew where it needed to go, and we just did it ourselves cuz it was gonna be cheaper. So then, in other words, she is exempt if they ever put a new county tile in there and all that.
Where is that at?
In Rutland Township.
I'd have to look at it. I can't.
I doubt it, Dave.
Why? Because that's what he's telling the figure of this one.
In s- in in some cases, they could be left out of an improvement project. In other cases, like if you're paralleling it or something and you've got your own all the way to the outlet. Um, I probably would do a reduction, a significant reduction.
That, that's an option you can look at. I don't think you'll give completely out six, but you can. We've done that. It's gonna pass it.
I I would argue that you should have at a minimum a a reduction. A large reduction because you took care of your tiling yourself. And so the district didn't need to do that, so you don't have as much benefit from a new improved tile. So when we did the reclass, you you told us about that. That's something that I would consider and and likely make reductions. Yep, and all of that, yeah, you you would have at a minimum, large reduction.
Pass, it's been like seventy-five percent.
Right.
Anything else for drainage folks?
I'm gonna make a motion to leave drainage.
Second, all in favor?
Kyle, isn't that, we don't like you, buddy.
Don't give it to a contractor.
I'm gonna give David. I'm gonna put it in my desk.
Yeah, the only reason is, is we keep, we have a plan holders list, and so then we know who's got the plans. If anything changes before we open the bids and addendum, we need to let them know so that they are bidding on the right thing. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. You're good. Thanks.
Thanks, Colin.
Yes, so what did you learn about drainage?
You know what? I learned a lot. Thanks, everybody. Can't tell you how much I learned sitting in these meetings.
I've learned. Every time, and drainage is my favorite thing.
Well. If you don't. Welcome.
I just seen those pictures.
It was good. It was a good conversation.
Flat tosses.
You mean with the, the, what went through the spool? They got charged, but it was a very small amount. It it's kind of what they call about that reclassification.
Over by Iowa Falls, they have a couple of tin muscles that come up out of the ground.
But that's why you're gonna get charged.
Five foot. High cuz it's pretty, pretty big.
All right.
Back to our.
Do the, we'll have some introductions and.
So the. County received uh, an application request from the Iowa DNR. On July twenty second, uh, up here at the auditor's office. We scheduled this, this hearing. Or this meeting. We've done a site evaluation beginning of this month. Um, looking back through past applications because Hope County hasn't had a new site and application in. Four or five years. I had to go back through some Randy Cracklow's notes and look at how we've done these in the past. Uh, we sent letters to adjacent landowners, um, letting them know about this meeting. And allowing them time to put in formal complaints or attend the meeting. And we posted at the local post offices in Livermore, LeBurg, and Redwick. For the society valve. Uh, we invited Kent come today to give his presentation about the site itself. And have a board adjustment meeting scheduled for five PM today. With that, I guess. Kent, you wanna introduce yourself in the world?
Sure. So, um, I'm.
That was, you can hear on the microphone.
So I'm Kent Kraus, and I'm with Pinnacle and Iowa Falls, Iowa, and we're a consulting firm that helps livestock producers across the state of Iowa. Stay in compliance with DNR and EPA. So we put the construction permit together uh, here on this site for Summit Port. Um, their representative wasn't able to be here this morning at a doctor's appointment, but uh. So anyway, uh, just going through the project, uh, what it is, it's a two-building site. Uh, it'll be uh, totally covered, uh, eight-foot pits below the building, total slab, total slab building. And it'll uh, house four thousand ninety-nine head of finishing pigs total. Um, they'll run those groups uh, two and a half times a year as far as total pigs passing through the building. Um, we've got uh, the nutrient management plan we built for the site. Uh, projects, it's gonna uh, produce about a million six hundred thousand gallons per year. Uh, we've got right now in the plan seven hundred and four acres. With acre capacity, uh, if you were gonna use every one of those acres, uh, three point six million gallons. So, uh, plenty of, uh, plenty of acres available, uh, for manure. Plus that manure, manure plan is what I call a living document. It'll have uh, acres added to it periodically in rotation.
They come and go.
Yep, yep, they come and go. So, um, the acres, oh, we do run what's called the uh. It's a, it's what I call a two-step process. We have to pre-score all the fields that are in the plan, uh, in, uh, on what's called the Iowa phosphorus risk index. And that's the susceptibility that that field to hold phosphorus in place and keep it out of Iowa's water system, okay? Uh, it's a system developed uh, in Iowa by NRCS, uh, the extension. Uh, Iowa State University, University of Iowa. Uh, it's, it's uh, one of the few like it in the entire country. But other four fields in this plan, all of those ranked in the very best category. Which would be a very low probability of phosphorus lost to Iowa's waters. We have to rank in the first two categories. We have to rank in the first two categories to, uh, even qualify that field for manure application, so. And phosphorus loss is predominantly a result of erosion, so again, if you think about the area, if we're flat. And if we're a long ways away from water, very low probability of erosion getting into the water system or sediment. Uh, Southern Iowa, we work pretty hard, uh, you've got a lot of slope ravines at the bottom of every slope. A, a lot higher probability for, uh, phosphorus loss specifically, so those fields score a lot tougher. Where we'll have to use terraces, no till, uh, filter strips, those sort of. Conservation tools to get those fields qualified if we can, but not all, not all fields qualify for manure application in Iowa. Once we get that qualification or that pre-scoring done on the phosphorus index. Then we can, uh, only apply manure to the extent that that crop's gonna use it for nitrogen, so again. Once we determine it's got a low probability of phosphorus loss, then we're gonna. Apply those manures based on the manure concentrate or the nitrogen concentration in that manure. And balance that with the proven yields, uh, within the county or, or on the farm, uh, uh, depending on what the producer wants to use, but. Um, that work's all been done on the nutrient management plan, that's at DNR, uh, as soon as we get done with this, this process within the county. DNR reviews the construction specifications from the engineering perspective. Uh, uh, concrete specifications, rebar specifications, the pits all rebar reinforced, uh, no wire mesh. Uh, you're hearing a little bit of talk of fiberglass reinforcing, none of that's used in these pits yet today, it's still all rebar, uh, reinforced concrete. Um, and it's all continuous pour, so the floors are all poured continuous. There's water stops and, and, uh, channels use, uh, connecting the walls to the floors. And then the walls are all poured continuous pour, uh, including the, the pump out ports, so, um, um. Very specific, uh, construction specifications to how the buildings are actually, actually built. But the reason we're here today is the county, uh, every year elects, uh, to participate or not participate in the master matrix. Uh, you've elected to participate in it and the master matrix is a tool. To try to evaluate that site on is it, is it a good site where it's at? Or is it not so good and are there some things that we can do to that site to make it better? And it, it's a scoring that evaluates the, the impact of the local air system, water system into the community, so. Um, air is predominantly separation distances to residents, churches, schools, public use areas. Um, the water system is, is again predominantly, uh, evaluated on distance away from water. Your small creeks, dredged ditches are one classification, your major named waters are a higher classification and require a higher set path. And then the community primarily, uh, deals with concentration of, uh, confinement within that neighborhood, so. Uh, there's, um, there's an overall score, uh, that's four hundred and forty point, uh, minimum. Uh, just jumping ahead, this site scored four hundred and eighty points. Now, that's correct, and then within those three categories as far as the air, water and community. We have to meet the minimums within those three categories and, um, and this scored, uh, more than, uh, more than does that, we'll go through that at the end, but. Just, uh, a little bit of detail to the scoring, uh, and I, I'll try to, um, not take too much time with it. But on question one, we look at additional distances that this site has from residences, hospitals, nursing homes and, and childcare. And, uh, the minimum is eighteen hundred and seventy-five feet for a, uh, for a pitted barn with a roof over it. Uh, we scored eighty-five of a hundred points on question number one, it had eleven hundred and fifty-six feet. Above the eighteen hundred and seventy-five feet required. And that closest, uh, that closest, uh, distance would be, uh, a residence to the southeast. Uh, at three thousand thirty-one feet away. Uh, we look, question two deals with additional separation distance to public use areas. The minimum distance to public use is twenty-five hundred feet, we looked out an additional fifteen hundred and one feet, there was none. We scored thirty points of thirty available on question number two. Question number three deals with additional separation above the minimum from churches, schools and businesses. Uh, eighteen hundred and seventy-five feet again is the minimum, we looked out fifteen hundred and one feet additional and we get thirty points of thirty of the additional points. On question number three. Question number four starts to deal with water, so. Min- uh, minimum distance to what I call small water, unnamed water, be your dredged ditches and creeks, uh, is five hundred feet. Uh, the closest, uh, water is twenty-eight hundred and sixty-three feet is a dredged ditch to the south. Um, we have twenty-three hundred and sixty-three additional feet there and we scored thirty out of thirty for question number four. Question number six deals with, uh, additional separation to critical public areas, so again, um. Uh, it's something really special, uh, Lincoln's, say Lincoln's birthplace or, or, um. Um, I don't have a good example of one and I don't know that there's any critical public areas in the county. We looked out fifteen hundred in addition to the twenty-five hundred minimum, uh, there were none, we get ten out of ten points with question number six. Um, additional separation, again, we're still looking at water. From a drainage well, sinkholes or major water sources, the minimum on major water is a thousand feet. We've looked out an additional twenty-five hundred and one feet, there was none, and so we scored fifty out of fifty. For additional separation to, to major water.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So it's the, the distance you have from the water, ag well, sinkwell or whatever, is twenty-five oh one, correct?
Uh, our minimum is a thousand.
Correct.
And then we looked out an additional twenty-five hundred and feet, so we looked out thirty-five hundred and one feet. And there was no major water, sinkholes or drainage wells. Okay, um, we looked at high quality waters, uh, that's a, a list of waters. Uh, it'd be like your cold water trout streams primarily up in, in, um, um, northeast Iowa. Or a protected water area would be like a, uh, it might be a, an area where they collect water for a city, city, uh, or a municipal aquifer.
They had it.
I'm just, sorry.
I got a question on that.
No.
Number eight.
Sure.
When the distance is twenty-five hundred and the minimum distance is a thousand.
Yep, so we. So we look out, so we take that thousand, we look out another twenty-five hundred feet beyond that, so.
So they're looking out thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, we're looking out thirty-five hundred feet and there's nothing for a major water.
So you took the twenty-five oh one and the eleven, or the ten?
And the thousand and add them together.
A water source would be the drainage gets, shuts to the south.
Yeah, that's what I would call, uh, small waters.
What's that?
That spreadsheet is mine.
Oh, oh, okay.
I know that.
Okay.
Alright. Making sense?
Yep.
No, you're okay, um, so anyway, uh, no protected water areas and again, that minimum was a thousand. We actually double that and looked out two thousand feet, there were no protected waters or high quality waters, so we scored thirty out of thirty for question number ten. Uh, the next, uh, point's dealt with the covered manure storage and again, so we're protecting. Uh, rainwater from getting in and diluting that manure, uh, it also helps. Uh, keep the wind away from that manure and carrying those odors as far, uh, we get thirty points for having covered manure and then. Dubtailed into that is question number seventeen. Uh, because it's cement storage or even your steel, what I call the slurry stores, the big blue tanks, they still qualify as foreign storage. Anything that's not an earthen basin or an earthen lagoon falls into that category, but that's thirty points for having formed, um, manure storage. This site will utilize what we call a truck turnaround, so the trucks will come c- completely into the site and be able to turn around. Without hopefully creating traffic hazards, uh, that's twenty points for utilizing a truck turnaround and question number nineteen. Summit has had no administrative orders in the last five years, I don't believe they've even ever had a violation. Uh, but no administrative orders, it's been through DNR legal, so they get thirty points out of thirty for question number twenty.
That's the only item that I can confirm.
And to confirm that, you'd have to call DNR, either the field office or down to, uh, DNR legal, uh, Des Moines. And they would give you that information if you need it. Uh, by facility size, the forty-nine hundred and ninety-nine head. Um, animal units are an equivalator to, to, to compare different species, so a steer. Uh, a beef steer would have one animal unit, they're, they'd say a pig is four tenths. The environmental liability of a steer, if you wanna put it that way, a chicken I think is one tenth. Fish gets into the one one hundred, uh, but anyway, uh, pork at forty-nine hundred ninety-nine head is in the smallest animal unit capacity. And scores twenty-five points. We talked just briefly about, uh, the manure in the pits. Uh, there's points available if we utilize, uh, water saving technology with the, the, uh, drinking systems. These, these, uh, this building will utilize what's called a wet dry theater, so they'll have a pan. Underneath the, uh, water nipples to catch the water waste each and try to keep that manure more concentrated. Again, uh, saves on hauling costs, but hopefully also reduces environmental liability through the application process. Same, same subject, manures, uh, it's still legal to broadcast manures on top of the ground. Summit is committed to injecting this manure at the time it's applied. Uh, or incorporating it, uh, on the same date that it's applied and that qualifies for thirty points. Uh, and that's a, that's a lifetime, uh, commitment as far as that injection. And then the final points, I think we've taken on this one is, and we didn't, they didn't really need to do it, but, uh. Uh, they think it's the right thing is addressing the closure plan, if for some reason this site's never used for, uh, pork production. They're committing and, and it's in the permit that this site will be taken down to whatever local, state or federal regs are at that time. So the manures will be pumped out and the buildings will be taken down and the pits destroyed to whatever, uh, regulations require at that point in time. And so with that, uh, they scored four hundred and eighty points total. I had mentioned there was a minimum category for the air, water and community, the minimum score required on air was fifty-three. Uh, they scored one thirty-five, so more than double. A minimum score for water was sixty-seven, they scored one thirty-nine. And minimum score for community was one oh one and they scored two oh six, but, uh. I'd open it up to questions on anything in the permit, uh, if you have any at this time.
Did you submit a formal closure plan?
Yeah, that would be part of the permit and the supporting docs. Um, so in the back of the, uh, so in the back there. And if you saw the original, we have this, this pink and yellow score sheet, uh, the yellow, uh, means that it's, um. It's got supporting docu- documents and the pink means it's got an operation, but. But the closure plan is master matrix number forty-one, it was on the last page. Uh, plan must be kept on site with all other MMP documents. Plan has been written accordance with NRCS conservation practices, uh, that are in place at this time. Um, I can read through it all if you like, but, but it is there, uh, within the permit and the supporting docs, if you, if you need to see it.
Right, uh, we did have one written complaint from a neighbor. Passing that around. And wondering why there's so many in the local area.
Uh, this, this one's primarily driven in the, you know, the, the landowners and, and or the tenants. Uh, are, are interested in the manure out of it and the, um, and the fertilizer, uh, savings. Um. Okay, the snapshot in time right now, uh, fertilizer prices relative to the price of corn are at an all-time, uh, high. Ever recorded and so there's been a lot of interest, um, lately in, um. Just trying to offset some of these fertilizer prices, so even after hauling cost, uh. Uh, there'll be significant fertilizer savings on, on just the nitrogen, potash and phosphorus are the three big nutrients. Uh, within swine manure, um.
And the, the manure management plan doesn't discuss whether it's gonna be pumped or hauled.
Um, more and more that gets pumped through umbilical systems every day. Uh, right now, the fields that are in the plan, uh, are, uh, are contiguous or right across the road. And, um, it'll lend itself to use in the umbilical systems. Um, if for some reason you get a pump, uh, field three or four miles down the road and it's kind of standalone. Then you'll see, uh, see the tank applications, uh, on those fields, but, uh.
Pardon my word.
Yep, uh, yeah, and, and everybody likes. The umbilical systems as long as they're available and as long as those fields are accessible, but, um. But yeah, it, it.
They would have to have a separate covert or. Umbilical systems to, to the county.
Agreement would be.
Agreement is, so they don't, they're not allowed to use the same ones that we use for.
Water.
For water. Uh, we usually typically install those quite a bit higher than the road ditch itself, that way if there's. There is no water sitting in them and obviously the umbilical ones gets across the road and so then private property instead of span.
And it gets the pass for that crossing.
And I don't know if they're utilizing any of those in the county right now or not.
Over by Brad Gate. And I think we did install one other one, but most everything around now is. Put it into a tank and then. Adapted that way. Um, I did have, uh, one property owner call and, and asked if I'm meeting, I see we've got. Two landowners here, we, we allow them time to speak, if they have any questions or concerns.
You wanna make comments?
Yes, I didn't wanna deal with the smell of it. Before you got. I will move through two and a half.
Yeah, so I said the area is fairly saturated with them.
Yes. And I also don't know what the fascination was with humble township, is we do have several. That are within, like we said, toasts.
And they're like a mile to the west, a mile and a half to the west, there's one that's sitting abandoned.
Half a mile to the west, I, I understand it's been sold. And, uh, then you south of us, a few miles east, west of us. And there is another smaller one just to the east, which would be just south of where this is going to go. So, we're pretty saturated, uh, actually, I don't know. If it's because we're so far from a, a large town. Or, you know, we're still in county, in a little township. For our records, can you state, both of you state your names, just so we make sure. You, okay. The letter, right, okay.
Tony Kubli.
Tony Kubli, okay, thank you, I'm coming, my property.
Have land south of there also.
Yeah, race borders that either.
Is there anyone living on the old place out there? Okay. Cause that would be the closest residence.
I think, I think as far as the scoring, that was still listed as the closest.
It wasn't listed being those.
Whether there was anybody there or not, it's still a house.
Yeah, and have a private well and.
The other thing is those are listed as two buildings, but they're double wide buildings, so there are two. Buildings.
Two rooms.
Right?
There'd be what I call two rooms, yeah. One, one roof, but, uh. That center wall becomes a supporting, supporting wall for the rafters, uh, and then it. Yeah, they end up ventilating on those two. Yeah, they end up ventilating on those two separate. And we call them tunnels. They'll be a, on the west wall, there'll be a row of uh, forty-eight inch fans, um. And they'll keep the side curtains up, and what they'll do is generate a five to seven mile an hour breeze. Lengthways down that building, uh, like a tunnel, uh, to keep those pigs warm, uh, uh. Or keep those pigs as cool as we can during the summertime is, is why we call them tunnels.
No, no question as to statement, the landowners where this is going to be are absentee landowners. They don't live in the area. The person who farms the land does not live in the area either. They live. And so they aren't directly, you know, affected as those of us who've been there. So, um, it would, it would appear since there are some empty ones in the county. That are available, that that might be an option. I don't know, but.
Why hasn't Summit looked at some of the empty ones instead of building new?
You know, I can't speak for Summit. Um, I, I think they probably have, they buy, I mean, I've seen them purchase existing facilities. Um, so, uh, but somebody had mentioned the one to the west, I think, has sold. And um, I think some of the others that were available for sale have also sold in the county, uh, because we. Again, we used to do the nutrient management plans on those, and I know we've turned them over to new, new people. So, um, but I, I don't really know uh, what other ones are empty in the county. I don't have any way to track that.
There are rumors out there that it is some that bought the ones to the west.
It's not.
It isn't. Well, that's good to clear that out.
Uh, yeah, I, I just. Yeah, I. Yeah, yeah.
Well, unfortunately, we can't stop them. I've been down to the Des Moines twice. Sat through meetings, argued with folks in Des Moines, uh, with the majority of the. Members sitting on the board have some sort of financial interest in the pork industry. So you get.
So there's the consideration of keeping the roads and their condition. That's a rather little devil, raise taxes for.
Yeah, that's why I asked a question about whether it's gonna be pumped or hauled, because the tanks are harder on our roads.
Well, we have to be shimming, we, we have livestock out to the, the main factor is a long ass round, or she was. Through all the needs for them. We have black trucks, but.
Will, maybe responsible for like roadmate, any part of it, you know, kind of like. The windmills, I know that's the part of the thing they have to keep the roads up. Is it the same way of work? Sites, okay, so where's the county is.
Well, it's agricultural, but I mean, it's. It's not like you can come back and recoup two loads of rock from the intersection to.
Well, you can if they're like hauling on a day, get stuck in the middle of the road and tear the road up.
If, if they're coming in for construction, you know, or you can prove that it was them that rutted it.
It's hard, hard proof.
Seed corn, when there's damage from pulling seed corn out, you know, we'll reach out to the. Owner can give them the opportunity to clean the road up before we go out and then. It's a bad enough, we'll send an invoice.
The same thing we do when they're loading trucks on the road in the fall, if it's been wet and they're. Rutting the road or, or whatever.
Right, right on this corner, this little piece of property here.
Has this been surveyed in Marston?
Not yet, won't be till it's uh, permits approved.
How many acres? I know you told me.
It'll, it'll uh, probably be five to eight acres. Uh, I don't think it'll be any smaller than five, um. It's, it sits next to two right ways, so there's a little bit more setback required off both the north road and the east road that'll. That'll eat up, uh, require a few more gross acres, um.
It's uh. The only one that we have was able to stop was, because there was a in-home business that they didn't realize that was too close. That was over by Thor. They didn't care about the three hundred people that live in Thor. So.
So there is no recourse, no, we can.
Well. So our score matches theirs been, or? I mean, that's.
Well, it isn't below the four.
It's not below the. The number.
Nothing we can do.
Yeah.
As long as your score is over the, the four forty, it doesn't have to match theirs.
No, I'm, I mean, we're in the ballpark.
Yeah.
I hope Summit Farmer, you're a good neighbor. I mean, you mean, there's. You know what I mean? Be considerate. Think about what's going on. And like with the roads and. Things like that.
Well, thank you for the consideration. I do have to say, I'm ready. I ran yours to come and they said, you won't be able to.
Unfortunately, they're correct.
Yeah.
We, we tried in the past and.
That's another thing where state has taken away local control. Which isn't fair, but.
And by the same token, Kent came and is willing to have answered all. They, they've done their part as.
Right.
So. Do we need to make an approval on this?
Um.
Motion to approve it?
Master Matrix Plan. I'm making motion for that. Accepting a master matrix program. I'll start it. Okay, first and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. You know, when we're gonna start this project, are we gonna wait for the crops out?
Um. I don't know if they'll, I don't know if they'll wait till the crops are out or not. I know they wanna have it done, uh, kind of the. The goal is to have it done before Thanksgiving weekend on the cement work. Um, and so get back into it, but there's another thirty days at the um. At the D and R, uh, they've probably got most of their work done as far as the nutrient management plan, and then. Uh, they'll send this notice of intent to permit back to the county. And then the county will give one more opportunity to say. Yeah, we're still in agreement with our other voter. Or no, we're not, um.
The way I understand this process is, you guys accepted and scored this. We'll have a board of adjustment meeting tonight where we review the application to what buildings on, at ground. Uh, as well as look at the scoring of the master matrix, and then next Monday, we will present the findings. Tonight's meeting. Uh, for you guys to vote to approve the application. Yeah, and then we send that off to the leaders for.
And they have thirty days and. So chances are they'll have to crop up before it gets done. It's pretty close.
So that needs to be put back on the agenda for next week after approval of the.
Yeah, so we'll need to put that.
Board of. Review the board of adjustment.
Board of adjustment presents.
Yeah.
Findings, and then the board supervisors to vote on the application.
Right. All right.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna jump down now to approve resolution twenty-five and eight, or eighteen. Resolution you set up is going to dispose of public family interest in rural property. This is bad. Little over there, so I'll look to go there.
Last week, Ben was approached by the mayor, right, of Livermore?
I was.
Oh, sorry. You, you told Ben, I couldn't remember how it went, but you were. Talked to about the noxious weeds that were there.
Yep.
Which in turn, we forgot that.
This never got followed through.
Yeah, we never went through it. So.
I found the email from October from John, that we had to do it as a resolution. And um, to even, to sell this, and then we'll have to put it in the paper, correct? And have a hearing on it. And John wrote the resolution, so our county attorney did, do the resolution.
So that's where we got.
That's where we're at.
Put it back on the burner to get it.
Yep.
Taken care of, so.
Get it done.
Okay, uh. From what I read from John's email, we have to fix a price. Or do you?
Fair market price. We've gotta figure out a fair market price. Is what we gotta do.
Interesting.
Yeah, we don't have to put it up for sealed bid or public bid. We just gotta have a hearing, but we've got to do it.
So we always usually have sealed bids, I think.
Can't remember the last time that we sold property. It would then. Laverne? No, that was.
Well, we. We sold some of these old housing sheds.
Uh, the old county sheds, those were sealed bids.
Yeah, that's how we did that by sealed bid.
Yeah.
So we couldn't do this on a sealed bid, I'm asking.
It just, we could, it just, it just says you have to have a public hearing and determine if you want to sell the land. An auction or sealed bids are not required. The land needs to be sold for fair market values.
Yeah, so you can seal the.
Yeah.
We don't have to advertise.
You don't.
Would've sold the oxbow out there, they had a minimum. And they, the first time they did, nobody hit that point, but they rejected them all. Good memory. Sometimes.
Well, how do we calculate your? The auditor or the assessor? The size, how she would calculate to get to the tax value of it? I don't have a clue, I'm asking.
That's what I thought it would be, we'd go to.
The easiest way is to do sealed bits, is then. We can reject them, we, we need to set a minimum working. Yeah, so we need to talk to the assessor and see what.
You're gonna have one bidder, maybe two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thing is, you can't build anything on it.
Yeah.
Close enough to the right of way, I mean, it. Or the offset distances, you're, you're not allowed to build anything on that.
So basically, we're trying to settle something that.
You're gonna put it back on the natural, but it really has no value. In my opinion, but so fair market value is whatever you give.
And that'd be what I'm saying, what people pay.
Right, okay, so Trish, this has to be set for a public hearing. So what?
And it has to be published?
Yeah, it has to be published.
So we gotta go at least two weeks.
Now we gotta look towards April to get it published.
But we won't get it this week because we've already missed the deadlines, ten o'clock.
Yeah.
So you have to look at two weeks, it'd be another, again, it'd be September eighth.
Yeah, well, I'm just waiting for Rick to say, that's the day I'm having my test done. Now we can pile it on.
I'll be back too.
So the eighth works? I mean, that shouldn't be.
Too long. I do have a question. On, on the eighth. We're gonna have our public hearing to approve the sale, so then after that, we have to set the date for the.
When the bids would be in, so can we do that like the following week?
I would think so.
Fifteen, I don't think we're gonna have a stack of them, I hope.
Do we have to publish though, the um. September twenty-second, by then, then dang weeds are just gonna go to seed.
I mean, you could. There's not, you know, the objections for the hearing and, and tell the newspaper that. Published for. The public hearing on the eighth.
Oh, I have, has one article.
And then.
The fifteen.
Sealed bid will be, uh, sealed bids will be. The following week.
Okay.
That's true. No wonder we hired you.
I know, I'd do it right after.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could do it right after.
Yeah, we could, yeah, it's true.
I'm good with that.
I like that.
Already published ones.
Yeah, I like that.
I like that too, very good thing.
I think that was first to know that.
Well, good job.
We didn't hire you, but people.
Somebody did, somebody did.
So you wanna make that a.
It's an all-in-one.
Motion then, to do it all in one of eight?
We're going to, we already have something, I mean.
Yeah.
So we better move that. Let's, can we do that eight forty-five?
Well, I would hope.
I would think so. The drainage guys can wait if we need to. How long did that, the ones have to wait. I don't either. Okay, so we're gonna do um.
Eight forty-five?
Public hearing.
That worked, Trish, eight forty-five?
On Livermore land, right?
Yeah.
And we have the legal distribution bound.
Yes, it's in the, it's in the.
In the resolution.
Eight forty-five.
And open bids, right? And do bids on the same day, or is the bid's gonna be on the fifteen?
Uh, open bids following hearing, same day. Same day, same day hearing.
Okay.
If, if.
So when do we want the bids to be turned in by?
Uh, I would say they have to be here by eight forty-five.
Okay, I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
And the parcels are on the uh, resolution.
Resolution.
Twenty twenty-five, eight dash eighteen.
Yep. No, I just thought of that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve County Resolution twenty twenty-five. Oh, eight dash eighteen, just, I just.
Either one, Bruce, B or B, B and B did it to go.
This is a resolution, we do a, we'll call Bruce.
Correct.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Okay, I'm also on. So the, the resolution is approved. Now we'll take the motion for the.
Date.
The dates.
For September eighth. Um, the public hearing and open the bids at eight forty-five AM.
I'll second that.
Okay.
With the request that the bid would be in the building by eight forty-five.
On September eighth.
Okay.
Eight forty-five, okay.
Yeah.
They should be here. All right, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Hardly any expenses.
Okay, now we have approved chairman to sign contract for carpet replacements in the judicial area, the IT room. Along with the judge's team, so it doesn't stay right on the agenda, so that is part of it. And this is just a prepayment of nine thousand dollars. Uh, I think there's a piece of paper stating. What the total cost is, and uh, the IT room and the jury room will be submitted to our insurance company.
It's a total of twelve thousand dollars though, right, the two, uh, it says eight and then four on the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you said the jury room and IT room will be submitted to insurance?
Yes. Yes, I can see if we can get them to. I know the IT room is for sure, the jury room should hopefully also be also damage to from the.
Yeah.
So my question is, the, there's nothing in the hallway there?
Yes, that's the judge's chambers, where.
In the hallway down to the judges, we're all in bookshelves.
Yes, that's.
Do we have to remove all that, or are they doing it around?
They're gonna cut around.
So basically, all we have to do is move the table in there.
Move the tables and chairs. And we told him we'd have someone move the tables and chairs from side to side if they need.
And all those individual rooms are gonna have it too, so it all matches, the whole.
And that.
Are gonna get the vinyl planking, kind of a.
Yes.
A grayish black. Vinyl planking.
Okay.
Then it will go on those, cause. Their bathrooms.
Yes.
Which is the ways, but I don't wanna go on record and say that. It's the weirdest thing, well. I mean, you have a jury room with, it'd be like. One of them doors went into a bathroom. It's like.
And it's right in the same room with all of the.
The chairman of the jury can reach over and open the door and let you in. It's very convenient.
But we can't do anything about it because that has to be there, so.
The judge wrote us a letter saying that we have to have that back. When there's a question.
But it's not gonna, it's not gonna be private for.
Well, you just wanna know how the rest of the public to know how. Never been in there, totally don't.
I didn't even know it was there, I thought it was a closet.
A wash closet.
Here, they call water closet.
Closets, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
We had a motion and a second.
I'll motion it.
Second, a bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very none, motion carried. Okay, down to committee reports.
I had no official meeting, I did get the numbers for the um. Fourth. Or get it on my not brain. The drive through food pantry. Um, sounded like they did just shy of eight thousand pounds worth of food. You know? They had. Quite a few from. The Bow and Livermore area, they had fifty family members, uh. Seventeen at phase one, phase two was fifteen, phase three was eighteen. For Humboldt, the drive through, they had a hundred and seventeen households of three hundred and fifty members. Total of uh, four hundred and fifty families provided food for, they had thirty four volunteers. And the next mobile will be the ninth of October. So thank you guys for going, I didn't get back to town. It was enjoyable. Is that a sarcastic slam? Enjoyable.
Yeah.
That's all.
It was a nice day though, it was.
Um, okay, uh. I, on the long date, I had Humboldt Order Health on Friday the fifteenth in the morning. And. Um. So actually, we're, Humboldt is doing really good as far as immunizations. Um, she's done that, there'll be more, of course, with school starting and everything. Um, but. The fate for a child, so, but there is measles, of course, in Iowa. There's eight confirmed and there's two that they call community. Um. Well, that they got it um, by community, it's not that they went out of coun- or, you know, out of state or out of country or anything like that, they got it within the community. And they were not outside of their community, so they call that community infectious, or what do you call, not infectious. Oh my god. Where you get um. Whatever, every, you'll think of the right word, April, but. Yeah, but um, yeah, so. Um. Kristen just said it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when we will get around here in Humboldt County there, they have done um. Uh. Drills on what to do if somebody comes in and says they have certain symptoms. And where they'll take them and how they'll do it to keep it so it doesn't spread if there's anybody with else within the. Um, officer theory or whatever, and then they're, they're just putting a plea out to please make sure and get everybody vaccinated. That needs, and even adults, they're saying that if you don't know if you were vaccinated or not, find out whether you have the measles or not. Because you still, if, when, if and when it does come, you could possibly get measles and it could be, as you're older, of course, everything is more severe.
But it is still part of the vaccination program that our youth. Our little kids are part of, right?
More and more people, and this is what Kristen brought up too, is more and more people are, are opting up and you can say it's. Religious or whatever, and they can't say what relig- you know, why, so that's why it's been so difficult and that. We're good in the count, I've got it here somewhere, how will we put the percentages, but there's still a lot of them. That um. Need to be immunized, they're not, they're not doing it. Um, we luckily, oh, our funding for the grant for Elder Bridge and, and the elderly community. They got the same numbers that they did last year, and we were really worried that our funding was gonna be cut back. Um, but there's getting to be more and more, because of the shortage of nursing homes and care facilities. Um, there's getting to be more and more in home, and so that's getting used more and more, so it'll probably run out like we did this. Last fiscal year, we were on the, by, I think it was the end of May, middle of May, something like that, we ran out of money. Um. It's really, these border health things are really interesting, um, water testing was very good. Um, she did the annual report, so. There was a hundred and ninety seven tests completed, ninety seven actual wells were tested, they had to come back. Um, sixty nine had um. Coliform, which I'm not for sure, nineteen with E. coli and thirteen with nitrates. No, E. coli, um, coliform bacteria, oh, in the well indicates potential contamination, I knew I heard that somewhere, harmful pathogens. But anyway, most of those because of flooding in Bradgate. And that, but she said they, they've, they've been able to shock, excuse me, they were able to shock a lot of them. It cleaned it up, yep, and so they've got the grants again for that, so. Um, that helps too. With the costs and everything, so she just wanted to make sure that we in Humboldt County are making sure that all the landowners. Um, that have wells, get their water tested, it's, nothing is reported. It's. It's just within that landowner that they know, but it's just for their benefit. So it's really wise for anybody who has a well to get it tested and to get ahold of her at. Um, her phone number's five one five, five three two. Three, four, six, one, and if you wanna take a picture of this April, you can. Oh, that's right, intense, yeah. That's right. And there's something up here at the courthouse, is it um, radon, you guys have radon, and she brought that up too, that we need to. So for people to get radon testing set up at the auditor's office. It's just a little packet, you take home, three dollars.
It's a little radon detection kit.
Yeah.
Set it on your table.
And it's, what was that, did you say nine dollars? Nine dollars for the radon testing. Then you put it in the basement, isn't it?
Yeah. I know you have to set it on to the.
All right, that's all I got. Other than a bunch of phone calls.
I had the Moffitt. Meeting. On Wednesday. Cats and dogs living together, she can follow there is. Um, and then I had the food pantry on Thursday. Go ahead.
Wednesday, I went down to the medic Medicare meeting, the board dies, the TC loving sent us. And experienced that, um, Nikki Conrad, supervisor, which kind of a, she moderated it, uh. Barry Hill was there, you know, he pointed was there. Of all the, there was like seven, eight departments there and they discussed the shortfalls of what they're doing to the county, I'm sure they're aware of it.
Yeah.
So, it was, it was interesting to listen to that. That side of it, for how they're going to handle different. Um, some of them are gonna just try and absorb the shortfalls of their operations, so it should pass off, some of them said that, what happens will just. Disappear.
But our public assistance dollars are probably gonna go up.
Yeah.
Cause that's where it'll go to.
Did the food pantry brief on Thursday the fourteenth, that's all I have. Anything else, three boys?
I want to answer, like you guys, now I know you guys next about, um. Why, just any other projects in the area, so we can reach out. And we do have two of our engineers coming tomorrow for the other house, they sent some show when it's not, but it's just one of them. Let you guys know if you have any questions about that operation. Thanks, and yes, they, that's all I have.
All right, Mary Nana, I will propose to again.
I need the motion during leave. And. There be six.
Second.
Okay. Oh, yes, one more comment, I'll just. Linda gave us a. Uh, letter from the state. I did that thing, I had it this year, basically is they come in and look at her. Assessments that she has done, oh, here it is. Sliding right on top. Uh, they evaluate her assessments she does in the county and they, and if she's too high. Or too low, it has to be in that ninety five percent to a hundred and five percent of actual sales. They'll give her equalization notice. So she has to correct that and hers passed, so. That what she's doing is falls within their guidelines. There's no adjustments for ag land, residential or commercial. So she is monitored by the state, what she does, and if she doesn't do her job, the state will step in and do it.
Or the accuracy of her assessments was pretty poor.
Yeah, it fell within the guidelines of the state authorities. So, I think she gave it about.
The tax amount will be out what by the end of the month. Okay, good.
All right. Anything else?
I used to fail them last week.
All in favor? Opposed, or adjourned?
Oh, like every four days now.
Oh, like every four days now, it's been all the.
I know.